...will be led in the pledge by Helen Lightness.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Anybody got any questions on consent agenda?
A lot of routine special education contracts on there, but some of you that are new, but that gives you an idea of how much we have to contract out.
Anybody got any questions? All right, Mr. Oldham, I guess number eight.
Number eight, course is offered for credit in grades nine through 12. Board of Education policy 4.201 states in part, "A listing of courses offered for credit in grades nine through 12 will be approved annually by the board." And the recommended approval motion to approve the list of courses for credit in Rutherford County schools grades nine through 12 for the 2013-14 as presented.
Any questions? Number nine.
Number nine, the special course request. The instruction department is requesting permission to make an application to offer credit for special courses under the following guidelines, rules and regs, 0521 3.052A. Local school systems may offer special courses not listed in 0521 306 on experimental basis. The commission of education must approve each course in advance each year. After three years, the course may become permanent part of the local school program on approval by the state board of education. After three years, a special course request must be re-submitted if the teacher listed on the application changes. Motion to approve Rutherford County schools making application for new special courses to be offered in the named schools in 2013-14 as presented.
I would just ask an explanation. Focus on adulthood and planning for transition, what those courses are.
Special education courses.
That's what I would have guessed.
And for typically kids in comprehensive development, that we have to do that transition to adult. For acting, you know, we keep them till 21, the number of those students. And so that's some of the courses offered. Ms. Bell is here if you want to know more.
No, that's fine.
That was going to be my guess, that they probably were. And the second part of it would be, I wonder why that's not part of a state?
It started in Chattanooga or Hamilton County. We looked at, we looked at some other places where we actually modeled it after some courses at other places, Ms. Bell. Do you remember? Those special.
We're talking about the transition courses, is that in high school?
The special course for those high schools that we added.
Yes, we are looking for that pathway and in order to do it through that pathway.
Sure.
It's the thing is that not all the high schools are required to do that. They're more available on break.
Mr. Oldham, the number 15, advancement via individual determination for Smython High School. Wanted to point out to board members that this is potentially part of a larger program that we may hear more about, and I'm glad to see it a part here of this, this request.
Anybody else?
I guess I'm just pleased to see we don't have negative psychology. We do have positive psychology. Not negative psychology.
Number 11.
Uh, number 10.
10. Summer school grades 6 to 12. Instruction department is requesting approval for the 2013 summer school calendar. Plans are for middle and high school course offerings. Middle school sites will be in Laverne Middle School and Oakland Middle School, and the high school site will be Riverdale High School. Middle school and high school offerings will be available during the first semester from June 3rd through June 27th, and the high school only second semester is scheduled from June 28th through July 26th, 2013. Transportation services are not provided. Tuition will remain at $100 for the middle school, $100 per one half credit for high school, $200 for drivers' education. Recommend approval motion to approve instruction department's request for summer school sites and calendar as presented. The drivers there, one reason it's higher is because of insurance and other repairs and things that you had to do. We changed it, I don't know, maybe four years ago, something like that.
Why don't you rotate that around every year?
We, we rotate high schools. This is, we've been having two. Again, when we went to the seven period day and the credits, we're finding that the numbers of students really could be handled in one. This is not the first time we've offered it in one high school, but it's the first time in probably three, four years, something like that. But not as big a summer school as we used to have once upon a time.
So we, I guess the next question is, if we're going to one, we'll go with a rotation. We'll, we'll catch the north end also, isn't that?
We didn't rotate this year. We stayed at Riverdale because of the location, the location near the interstate so that we could travel from all ends of the county.
Okay.
We have other events that are happening at some of the other high schools that have that, have a similar location such as like the high school that are tying up those schools producing common core training with the state department there at that school and the middle school because of them being next to each other and giving them a larger venue.
Anybody else? Number 11.
Number 11, and this is a new item. Online summer school courses grades nine through 12. Instruction department is requesting approval for the 2013 online summer school course development and instruction. Plans are for high school course offerings. The high school site for lab work and testing will be Riverdale High. High school offerings will be available during the first semester from June 3rd through June 27th, 2013, with a second semester schedule of June 28th through July 26th, 2013. Tuition will be $125 per one half credit for high school coursework. The development and instruction for the first five students will be paid for by extended learning fund, extended contract, which you may not remember from, provided by Tennessee Department of Education and summer school tuition. The following courses will be offered, and there's the list of courses, A and B, semester one, semester two. So your recommended approval is motion to approve the instruction department's request for the online summer school proposal as presented. Mr. Zago and Carol McCollum is here, have been working on that. They can talk to you about that if you'd like to learn some more about it.
I'd like to hear about it.
Okay. Step up, Mr. Zago or Miss McCollum, whatever you'd like.
Do you think, Mr. Blair, that you're interested in?
Well, just with some of the things that we've heard with the virtual school that's working out of, well, Union City, I guess sometimes the online raises concerns for us because of the poor performance of that program.
Right. This is not replacing our footprint that we have in our buildings. This is in addition to, for example, this in addition to for summer school. It gives students an opportunity to do this without being at the building for summer school, but we all want to continue this into the next school year. Students can earn additional credit above that seven period day that they have with that as well. The one thing that they will have to be there for is assessments. They won't take their assessments online. The assessments will have to be done in a lab setting at the building in the presence of their instructor. As far as any of your other concerns?
Well, you know, there's so much with cheating, you know.
Tell them how the teachers monitor. That's the kind of piece that you need to know, teacher's son, they need to know that.
Identification of the student, so.
Right. You, well, I guess you could go ahead and cheat for some of the work that's being performed online, but the assessments, there's a pre-assessment, a mid-assessment, and a post-assessment that's involved in the situation, and you're doing that in the presence of an instructor, so you could not cheat there. That, that will let you, let us know exactly what you have learned and have not learned. There would be no advantage to cheat on homework or work that's being assigned throughout that period of time.
Some of it is compass learning online courses too, which the teachers that are monitoring this actually communicate with the students and monitor the students' work, and they can see what they're turning in or not. And literally, we know from experience, if you remember, the old 10, 10, 10, what was?
E for 10.
E for 10. Yeah, of course, that the state offered for a while, some of the same model for that. The teachers call the students, talk to them. You have to pride some of them.
The teachers have the ability to call a student into the lab setting too at any time. Mr. Blair, if you were a student in the classroom and we suspect something's changed, all of a sudden your answers have changed or things doesn't seem straight, we can call you in and say, "All right, we're going to do these assignments together." We have that ability as well.
I think it's a great idea, you know, Commissioner Jordan, those were some of the things he brought out in a letter to the D and J year before last, so.
We're really looking at this as an option to students showing up to summer school every day. We have children that can't participate in summer school because their parents are going on vacation for two weeks, and you can't miss three days in summer school. If you miss three days, you automatically fail. So that prevents those students from making up. It also may cause us to have a non-graduate at the end because they hadn't had an opportunity to make up a failed semester or a failed course over the course of the year.
If something like this could be enhanced during the school year, excuse me, would we have a problem with the daily average attendance if we, if we were to have children or students off-site, but they came in for lab and assessments? I mean, is that something that?
Attendance could be taken by the participation in the class. Once you enroll a student into the SIS program, the students are doing that work. We've looked at that as well, so they would camp. It also is, what we're currently looking at is in addition to your record day. For example, if Mr. Blair failed second semester of Algebra I, we have that opportunity for him to make that up the first semester of his following year without going to summer school. And still continue on a full six, seven credit day.
What faculty-student interaction is there during this, during this time period, aside from the assessment model and that, not only just written feedback for homework or?
Students have the opportunity to go to a lab and spend time with the teacher in the lab.
But they're not, is, is the video, is the instructor in any way being able to get video to the student to actually see lecture or instruction in that regard?
Those things are being done online through Moodle and online.
Video, Skype.
Yeah.
Phone calls, they are encouraged. We'll be encouraged to call.
Maybe we ought to do a spotlight on education. That's something to let you see, we could do.
We could do some of that.
We could do a briefing if you got a chance.
What, is there, is there any type of special training that the instructors get to deal with online as opposed to?
Most of the instruct, most of the instructors that we've lined up for this were part of the E for 10, which is a similar program that the state ran prior to us looking at this. They have already performed these kinds of tasks and also done things like this with students in Rutherford County.
But so they are our faculty people?
Yes, sir. Oh, yeah, we're not contracting with someone outside. We're actually using our current curriculum, our current textbooks. That keeps the cost low so that we can provide this service to our students.
They have to take all of the end of course assessments if it goes with that course too.
And they still.
They have to take the state assessments.
Like Mr. Oldham said, they'll take an ELCs at the end of the course as well.
Is there any advantage at all for us to, I don't even know if possible, I'm just thinking outside the box a little bit, of offering this to students outside of our system?
I, I would think it would become a burden on us financially. This is a service we're providing for our community if we're not careful. We kind of need to grow slow with it as well. That's why we started this, so that we could get our feet wet and grow with it this summer and then make plans on it.
Well, this, this comes from my thought process that grew a year or two ago when I was at a, at one of our national conventions and talking about the courses like Calculus II or III, or that they may only have two or three students, and therefore we do it as an online thing where there's instructors actually at a site and sending the video or sending the instruction to various schools. And I wondered at that point in time, that you've got a system next to us in Caney County that cannot provide physics and chemistry too and a lot of those kind of things. It just seems like that would be an advantage to them, and I don't know if there's any advantage to us to, to be able to provide that kind of an opportunity to.
There isn't advantage.
Could probably provide it any other way.
There isn't advantage to us. That's an angle that we've actually looked at and discussed. We could have students that are only needing, or say, two students at Eagleville that needs this class. We can provide this service through an Oakland high school teacher or a Riverdale high school teacher so that we can continue that education at the level of rigor that we want to happen at Eagleville as well, where we, it would not be to our advantage to pay the money for a full-time teacher to teach that at school. It would be a monetary saving is what we see at some point because we can have students from various sites talking with one single teacher.
I, I'm just wondering from a cost standpoint, if there were two kids at Caney County High School that want to take the same course, it's not going to cost us any more to do that, I wouldn't think, to that instructor if you kept, if you had their, if you had the space for that.
I think that would be, we could most certainly do that if they're willing to drive the distance to do the assessments and those things so we can continue the integrity of the course.
I'd, I'd just like for us to maybe consider that. It just seems like the idea is to try to help kids, and that's got to be a system that struggles to offer some courses that we offer routinely here in our county.
As we get our feet wet, we most certainly will look at that.
But do you see, do you see something like that being expanded for, I think, what, two years ago, we had one physics teacher graduate from the entire state of Tennessee?
Yes, sir.
That maybe, say, we have difficulty finding someone that, that we pay for a service to get to do that, still have the assessments here, but have the instruction someplace else.
We possibly could contract with a person. I'm really wanting to keep that as much as possible with our Rutherford County teachers teaching that, but if that's a service that we need to provide because of the women, number of instructors, absolutely, once we have the system in place, it would probably lend itself to do something.
Well, it almost seemed like we could, we could take, take the lead on that and, and set that up and have other systems pay for utilization for us.
As all of you see, this can grow into something very large.
Full utilization of technology.
Absolutely.
What is the anticipated number of online students this year?
We have minimum set numbers, a minimum of five because of the way the state funding requires for us to do that. We also have a maximum number in that classroom, a maximum of 20 as well, because if you're trying to take care of those online classes and also push a full semester in four to eight weeks, it'll take a huge undertaking.
And the infrastructure is there to handle it all?
Jeff Sanvig, Mr. Oldham, and myself have discussed those things.
Good.
Papers. I mean, papers. I know that the senior English has a paper that they have to do, but they still be required to do that paper just like to get out? Or would that be the equivalent to the other class of English that seniors can take? Which one, which, which English would it be? Would it be the one that had to be the research paper or the other English for seniors?
That's the advantage of our teachers writing the curriculum. It'll, we'll keep the integrity of the Rutherford County instruction.
Well, I was just wondering, which of the two English would it be?
She's talking about communications for life versus.
Communications versus.
Standard.
It'll be their standard English, and we're looking at classes that are required for graduation.
That's still, they can, they can take either or to be.
Right now, it's just we're resuriting the school.
Because I've, I've seen some seniors to take communications for life and.
We're going to keep it simple first.
Yeah. Pretty simple class.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Zago. We're going to, it's okay with everybody, we're going to fast forward to number 14 for Mr. Sanvig. I think you have to go health and ed, and I believe, Ms. Carter, you're probably going too, so I think your 13 is pretty well straightforward, so we'll catch you Thursday. But let's move to 14 right quick, and anybody has any questions, Mr. Sanvig on that?
School lunch prices for 2013-2014. Under the terms of the 2010 Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act, our average meal price needs to be moving towards an average of $2.59, which is $2.92, the federal reimbursement for a free meal less .33. The federal reimbursement for a full pay meal equals $2.59. Our à la carte food sales can be included in this calculation, and with à la carte sales, we are meeting this test and can hold our student meal prices. We last increased our student meal prices for the 2008-2009 school year. However, the USDA entitlement per meal of 27 3/4 cents has to be added to this minimum price for adult meals. We are requesting to set the teacher meal price for 2013-14 at $2.90 and the price of visitors' meal at $3.10. This is an increase of 10 cents for these two groups. This is being done to meet the federal requirement. And there's your meal price, elementary $2, middle $2.25, high school $2.25, teachers $2.90, and visitors $3.10. And that would be the motion.
Blair?
Sequestration. If it kicks in, is, is the food? The, the meal program, is it excluded?
Yes. But I haven't seen anything, so it's just really one suggestion of that program, that that aspect of the program.
Could be.
It could be. I haven't seen anything.
With it being so close to the dollar or quarter dollar, is there any advantage to the teachers and visitors both being at $3 just for the sake of accounting?
They can't be at 3.
They can't be at 3?
They can't be at 3, no. $2.90 is the minimum we could have, rather than go up to 3. We thought we'd pull it down that 10 cents. Yeah, our, our friend and I first discussed keeping it in quarters, so I figured for those two groups, we'd go with it.
Okay. You said it can't be at 3 though?
No, it cannot be. I'm, I'm sorry, you could take it, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I just thought. We, we initially were looking at taking it to 3, but $2.90 held it as low as we could hold it, and we thought we could not go up on that more than we absolutely had to.
Sure, I understand that.
Initially, we faced, when this act first passed, it looked like by the end of this phase in the period, we would face a 50 cent increase for the student meals. So because of being able to include the à la carte, we don't have to do that. And I'm sorry, I was thinking backwards.
Okay.
And, and we have kept the visitor meal higher, so we are giving those staff members a bit of a discount for hindsight.
How many visitors you have? Just curious.
I could get that for Thursday.
How many of them?
Around Halloween, Thanksgiving, we'll have quite a few visitors. I know the question, do I have to get that?
All right, Mr. Oldham. Anybody else got any questions on that one? Number 12. Oh, man, I'm sorry, B. Let's go to B.
Okay. B is Race to the Top Amendment. March is the window for amending the year three budget for our federal Race to the Top project. The proposed amendment increases regular instruction expenditures by $44,925.81 and decreases expenditures in regular instruction program by the same amount. The amendment will allow us to pay our annual support fees for compass learning and Read 180 at Holloway before the year four Race to the Top funds become available in early October 2013. The funds being reallocated are primarily budgeted for substitute teachers used to cover for in-service days. Recommend approval motion to amend $44,925.81 to regular instruction expenditures and to decrease expenditures in the regular instruction program by the same amount as presented. Next year is the last year of Race to the Top of the four-year program, about 3.6 million we had over the four years.
I just want to take the opportunity to point out the wisdom that the central office staff has shown at the budgeting office of using these funds for non-recurring expenses and, you know, when this program phases out, you know, it'll certainly be something we have to consider, you know, and, and what we have invested in, but largely what we've invested in are things that have had an impact and don't require reinvestment for that impact to continue. And it's outstanding that we've made those choices.
All right. Mr. Sanvig, and Ms. Carter, dismissed. I have a safe trip.
They can leave, you're not firing them, Brian. They can leave, you're not firing them, Brian.
No, no, dismissed. Go back to number 12.
This is Laverne High School Dual Enrollment Academy. In previous meeting, Laverne High School presented a plan to develop a dual enrollment academy with Motlow State Community Colleges. The presentation included several procedural requests for establishment of the academy. Three of the procedural requests are not addressed by board policies yet fall under responsibility for the director of schools and staff. One was transportation. The request for a few high school students to ride an earlier bus with elementary and middle school students to Royal Water and Laverne Lake and Cedar Grove can be granted by the transportation agency. No direct board action will be required to do this, and we've already talked about it. We can do that. Number two, staff consideration. Laverne High School has requested that the class sizes of 10 or more students in dual enrollment be accepted. While we typically ask for 15 or more students, this request is consistent with initial enrollments in some advanced placement and international baccalaureate classes. The assistant superintendent of curriculum instruction monitors and approves these courses. No board action is required for that. My guess is it will bill, but the first year, what they're saying to help them get started, it might not be over 10 or something. Three, in zoning. Enrollment in the dual enrollment academy could be similar to the zone exemption process for the international baccalaureate program. Students will complete a zone exemption request based upon minimum scores from the ACT Explorer and Plan Score criteria. The normal zone exemption process will be used with accelerated approval for students seeking enrollment in dual enrollment academy. Basically the same things we do with IB now. You know, if you've got the grades that show that you can enter the IB program, then we would grant you basically that. It, it allows us to track them, so we need to do the exemption process so that Mr. Evans can track students going from one school to the other, and there's the, the zone, the actual school zone. And number four, textbooks. Motlow State Community Colleges has notified Laverne High School that the college textbook used will be acceptable for three years. The Laverne High School Dual Enrollment Academy is requesting the school system furnish appropriate textbooks since high school and college credit will be granted. And that's the one thing that you are going to have to act on because it's not, one of us cannot cover. But let me say this, talking with Mr. Ashenaw, basically Motlow is going to accept for dual enrollment all of our courses with the exception of the students, which early transportation is a group that needs to go to take a social studies history class at Motlow. That's the group, and in that case, we have to use, going to Motlow, we have to use that Motlow textbook. So that, that's really, right now, as far as, maybe the only one that that's going to apply to it. But the motion is to approve for three years the Rutherford County school system loaning required textbooks to students participating in the Laverne High School Dual Enrollment Academy.
How many books you talking about this?
Well, we're not sure it'll be any more than the social studies. The rest of them would be our books anyway. In other words, if, if the others that they're taking in dual enrollment is one of our textbooks taught under their criteria and their assessment piece, then, then we don't have to purchase an additional textbook for that. When you get into high school in some of the junior and senior years, what you're talking about here, they're expensive textbooks too. They're well over $100 a piece, the ones we eat. And so they were fine with Motlow to use that under their criteria and their assessments. I think it'll be the social studies, which I, it was 100 and something dollars also, I think, a textbook.
Anybody else? Uh, number 13, we'll just go ahead and cover it while we're on.
13, Laverne High School Baseball Scoreboard. Principal Dirk Asher of Laverne High School has requested permission to construct a new scoreboard at the high school baseball field. The scoreboard is approximately 6 feet by 26 feet in length and 10 inches deep. It is a fair play scoreboard by Translux costing $17,245, including installation. It will be constructed at no cost to the Rutherford County school board or Laverne High School through funds coming from the LHS Baseball Boosters Club. The recommended approval, the motion is to approve construction of a fair play baseball scoreboard at Laverne High School baseball field funded by the boosters club as presented at no cost to the board or Laverne High School. This is consistent with what's at the other high schools. You know, you know what I'm talking about.
It's a bargain for us to, you know, for these booster clubs to do it.
It is, yep.
Number 15.
15 is our new revised policies. Policy 5.302, which is a sick leave. The purpose of this revision was to change the definition of immediate family member for bereavement leave to the same definition of immediate family under the sick leave policy. The other revision, policy 4.602 is. The other revision, policy four point six oh two is, uh, GPA and class rank. Purpose of this revision is to add salutary requirements to the existing policy and to specify requirements for valedictorian and salutary must be met by the end of the seventh semester beginning for the two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year. These requirements become effective with all students who begin high school in the two thousand nine, ten school year. And C is policy six point three oh four, student discrimination, harassment and bullying intimidation. The purpose of this revision is to reflect the most current Tennessee School Board Association model policy for this issue by incorporating new statutory reporting requirements and definition for cyberbullying and hazing. And adoption of policy three point two one one, energy use and conservation. The purpose of the adoption, there's a possibility the school system may be able to access state funding for energy conservation programs. The first step toward accessing the funding is the adoption of an energy use and conservation policy for the district. The policy will also allow for a percentage of savings derived from the program to be used for further conservation projects. And the last one was adoption of policy four point four zero six one, employee use of social media. The purpose of this revision, with the increased use of social media by students and employees, school districts have a need for a policy providing guidance and regulation in this area. This policy was developed after reviewing the Tennessee School Board Association's model policy along with several other school system policies. The recommended approval is motion to approve revisions to policy five point three oh two, policy four point six oh two and policy six point three oh four. And then the adoption of policies three point two one one and four point four oh six on first reading is recommended by the policy committee.
Any comments? Alright, number sixteen, general discussion.
May I go up to the, uh, we're presenting our building program, five-year plan for the health and ed and the fact. If you don't mind, I would like to go up there and be with him tonight for this presentation, is that okay?
You carry on.
Okay.
Dismissed too, yeah. I'll be dismissed here in a minute.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman, with so many, uh, bills that we consider maybe, uh, that we might not think are, uh, a good fit for our system. You know, we, we sent a resolution, uh, to our legislative body several weeks ago and, and I'm wondering if we need to put a little more teeth in that, possibly each board member send a personal letter rather, rather than a resolution? Or maybe we send each one a letter that we each personally sign? So I, I certainly would like to make sure that our local delegation is on the same page with us with, with so many issues being presented, uh, you know, to the legislature this year. You know, vouchers, of course, being number one in charter schools and, but there's several and it may be in our best interest and the state's best interest for us to be even more proactive by reaching out and touching them in correspondence and, of course, phone calls and emails.
I, I'll just make my comments, anybody else kick in? I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of doing what, you know, what, what members feel like the best thing. Cause I'm in agreement with you, because what I've seen so far, it doesn't look too good. Uh, everybody can formulate their own opinion, but comments I've heard, uh, we've asked with two resolutions to, uh, not go with charter schools, vouchers they want. And, uh, what I've seen, like I said, what I've seen so far, it doesn't look like it's gonna go the direction we want, so, you know, I'm open to whatever the board wants to do.
Perhaps even expand beyond the, uh, the ones that are tied to Rutherford County and contact, uh, chairpe, chairpersons, uh, of the committees as well as the, uh, speaker and, uh, and lieutenant governor. You know, from our board, uh, you know, that, that we feel strongly about this. You know, tho, those people in authority of, you know, the direction of that legislation perhaps could hear from us as well. I totally agree.
And it may be the communication through the TLAC, uh, that, which I represent for this board and, and our region, that, uh, we can get one hundred and thirty-six different boards across the state to do the very same thing. And, and have some, at least, like I said, be proactive, at least let them understand, you know, our position if, if there's any question in their mind.
I believe, in, in response with Mr. Hoda, he said whatever we do, we need to do it pretty quick.
Could we, uh, have, uh, letters for the board to sign, uh, to, and, and I think even the governor i- is appropriate, but to the governor, lieutenant governor, speaker of the house and chairman of the education committees in both bodies? If we could sign those on Thursday night and forward them and, uh, and then, you know, perhaps it would be appropriate if we have a, you know, a little, uh, page that gives us a home mailing address or something like that? And we can each actively take a role, uh, to personally pin a, a, a letter to those state representatives.
Or at least do the same thing for our local delegation as we're gonna do for the governor and lieutenant governor.
Personally sign, copy them on those notes?
And we all, and we all sign notes?
Absolutely.
So.
Uh, we'll get, if, if that's what you wanna do, we'll, we'll have something between now and Thursday. Uh, we'll come up with something on that, so.
Are we at a place where, have we had passed, was it four or five topics that we, that we really focused on on the resolution?
Resolution, we only did three, didn't we? We did vouchers, uh, charter school authorization and the election, uh, or the appointment, that we wanna keep the appointment of director of schools. I think we, we kept it at three, but I'm not a hundred percent positive. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, we did three. We may wanna expand that a little bit with some legislation that, that has come across here over the last two weeks.
You got anything on the man, Mr. Hoda?
Not right at hand. I, I almost feel like, you know, is it really two topics? The vouchers and the charter schools that we really wanna just focus on?
I'd, I'd say probably this might, that might be the case this time, but, um, the, the elected superintendents issue, they always seem to go at a different angle, trying to, uh, uh, find a way to, uh, get that back in some part of the state even if it's some of the smaller, uh, systems. So it, it still is a concern to me.
Likewise, I, I just don't wanna, we've, we've zeroed it in, now we're reemphasizing. I just wonder if, uh, a, a letter of two topics really pins it down to?
I would not disagree.
Yeah, I, I, I would be inclined to put this on two topics and push hard.
We'll do it. Any other board members? I guess I'll ask if everybody's in agreement. Alright, we got that one covered. Anything else? Nothing else, we'll see everybody again Thursday night. We're done.